One, the special meeting of the Shell Planning and Zoning Commission can being conducted entirely via Zoom is hereby called to order. Protocol for today's meeting was previously reviewed by Corporation Council. Indicated to me it is compliant with the executive orders issued by the governor. I fear for those watching from a remote location. But everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I'll start off with a roll call of the commission. And staff, please verbally indicate you were present when your name is called. Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Commissioner Parkins? Wondering if she's having a hard time logging in because I know she was coming. Commissioner Wodowski?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Laskos?
Present.
Commissioner Mato?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Usel?
Present.
Myself, Commissioner Harder. Mr. Rosetti, our administrator?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill, our assistant administrator and CEO?
Present.
Mr. Nappi, our downtown projects coordinator? Is he saying?
He's here, he's logging on.
Okay. Mr. Panico, our consultant?
Present.
Mrs. Vernassos, our recording secretary?
Present.
Very good. Commissioner Parkins, are you here? Okay, I'm just gonna go on recess for just a second. Oops. All right, for the record, Commissioner Tiki indicated to me that he was unavailable for today's meeting. And alternate Commissioner Usel, I'll seat you in place of Commissioner Tiki for today's meeting. A couple of points before continuing with today's agenda. This is the commission's 39th meeting being done via live streaming process. Mr. Rosetti will act as the Zoom meeting host. While commissioners will be able to make comments throughout the meeting. The chair asks that you identify yourself and wait to be recognized by the chair. Before speaking to make sure we're not all speaking over each other. And to make sure our recording secretary is clear as to who is speaking. I just saw a new window open up on the screen, so Commissioner Parkins, are you present? She has to unmute herself.
You can see her metal like.
I know. She has to unmute herself.
I'm here, can you see me?
Yeah, well, we see metal like, so.
That's me.
That's you, okay.
I don't know how to get in under anything else, this is so troublesome, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do you have the video link to click on or something?
Video camera in the lower left corner.
There we go, I'm sorry, for some reason I thought we started at 6:30, it's been a while, guys.
Oh, that's okay.
My brain is like the weather, foggy.
Yeah. All right, so I'll continue on with the points that I was making, our applications. For certificate of zoning compliance. Are our first agenda items. And we'll begin with application 4893 Expedite the Deal 675 Bridgeport Avenue for a sign. This, this is the location of Chase Bank. That is on the corner of Commerce and Bridgeport Avenue in the same building that Pet Supplies Plus is along the front. The applicant is requesting that the current illuminated wall cabinet sign. That's mounted to the exterior wall over the entrance doors. Be replaced for an illuminated channel letters. And the circular chase logo. The applicant is also requesting. An additional matching illuminated channel letter and logo sign be placed above the drive through canopy. Photos of the current and proposed exterior signage were posted to the city's website and they're being shared on the screen right as we speak. Is there anyone from the applicant that is present?
Chairman Harder, I just want to preface this for a couple of seconds, I have a couple of points to make.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Neill.
So this sign is, this application is a little unique. So the sign number one that the applicant's applying for is just a standard replacement of the. Original Chase Bank sign that was there, they're updating the logo for a more modern look. The second sign is where it gets a little tricky, it's over the canopy drive through. And so by the sign regulations, each, a single tenant is allowed up to two wall signs provided they are. On a separate distinct wall, either facing a separate street or a parking area. So really, the first thing to consider is. Does that canopy constitute a second distinct wall? You know, to be viewed from a different angle, which the applicant is, is illustrating. In order to have the sign there in the first place.
Do you have the Google map aerial view?
So there's two, Alex, are you screen sharing still? No. There were two links posted on the website, one is a presentation. That's sort of a slideshow that goes over, you know, all the different angles from that intersection where you can see the building and the second. Is the actual application, there you go, so sign number one. Is the replacement sign, number two is the canopy. So it's, there's nothing in the regulations that defines clearly what a wall is or what. You know, what we would consider a wall, and this is not a PDD, it's regular, I believe it's LIP. So for the first decision for the commission to make, I guess is. Does this canopy constitute a second wall where a secondary wall sign would be allowed? And then the second part of that is, how do you calculate the area of that wall? Sign committee did not meet with this or about this sign, if that's something that the commission would want. You know, I can set that up for this week if they feel the need to table it and have a discussion with the sign committee and get a recommendation that way. It's up to you.
Commissioner Harder?
Go right ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
I think we have to define what a wall is, I mean, that is, that's truly not a wall. It's, it's part of a canopy. It's, you know, as I say, we have to define what we think a wall is, is it from floor to ceiling? Is it part of an integral part of the building? You know, I personally see no problem with it because one is facing Commerce Drive, the other one's facing Bridgeport Avenue. Just saying, I'm not quite sure, maybe Mr. Panico can, can answer that.
This is kind of a unique situation, Josh and I talked about it at length. If you think it's still part of the building and it's facing in a different direction, the regulations do allow. A portion of the signage that he's entitled to on the front of the building to be placed on the side of the building. The question is, is this really on the side since it's visible directly from the street? A wall is on a 45 degree angle, the so-called wall, the canopy over the, over the drive in is on a 45 degree angle. So, which is it? I think it's one where you have, you can use your own judgment if you wish.
Yeah, if you look at the presentation, they can, they show some visuals from the intersection where you wouldn't be able to see. One sign or the other, basically, you only see one sign at a time depending upon where you were in that intersection. Or whatever else it is.
I just question why they're not putting it on the side canopy because right from this angle right here where you are. Where you were. If you could just go back one picture. So when you're coming down this way, you really can't see any signage for Chase.
No.
When you're coming down Commerce.
So I question why they're not putting it on the side because technically, yes, it's not, I agree, it's not a wall, it's a canopy. And they've got both of their, what they're proposing is to have two signs facing Bridgeport Avenue.
The angle of the canopy is a little different on that aerial view. The Pet Supplies Plus storefront and the Chase storefront are pretty parallel to Bridgeport Avenue. And the canopy goes off on an angle, and I think that's the 20, 45 degree angle that Mr. Panico was talking about. The, the appearance of the canopy isn't unlike the canopy that's above gas station pumps. You know?
Right.
I don't know if I understand what they're, they're coming from. I frankly said to you, you know, how did this occur, were they have, getting a lot of customers coming in saying, geez, I couldn't find you? But a lot of people use GPS, so it shouldn't be too hard. You know, I, I, I think that the replacement sign is done in good taste. And I don't see this being on a canopy as being overly gaudy. You know, it is being done at the discretion of the commission. There is another approach and that's to eliminate some of the trees, but I would not want to see that happen personally, so.
But in effect, they would have three signs on Bridgeport Avenue.
Would be in the third being on the monument, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you've got three signs on.
Here, if they, if they have any comments or any, you know, flesh out the presentation or the, if they want to do that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Kelly? I think that the placement of the sign on the canopy. Is, to my looking at it strictly directional. Or underneath the canopy, that's, that's where you draw. You know, if it was, on, on the other, if you looked on, on one of the drawings.
You're really coming from the other side, that's the exit of the drive.
Yeah, yeah, but I know that. But, but you, you could see from the aerial view of the trees and whatnot, that if it was on the side. Facing Commerce Drive, you may not see it. Probably in the summer or whatnot.
Yep.
Yeah, there is very dense vegetation and that driveway, that drive up pavement is below the pavement of Commerce.
Correct.
Commissioner Harder, Commissioner Wodowski?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wodowski.
I, I would like to see if we can move this over to the sign committee because I think we, we need a little bit more information and maybe a couple of people from the sign committee. Subcommittee can take a drive by there. If I remember correctly, I think that is below, like, I think it was, Mr. Panico said is below the Commerce Drive. So I'm not sure how much of that you're gonna see. Coming down Commerce Drive with the trees and then the location of that sign, so you, you're not gonna see it coming down Commerce Drive towards Bridgeport Avenue.
It's not positioned on the back of the canopy, it's.
No, no, I know, I know, so. That sign on the front side of there, the exit part of the canopy is, is, is not gonna do anything for Commerce Drive. I think the angle it's at is not gonna really make much of a difference because of the way the trees are on the property. And if you're coming down Bridgeport Avenue going northbound. You're not gonna see that sign until you're through that intersection pretty much. And by the time you see that. And that's what I'm saying, so I, I don't think we need so many signs, they got the monument sign, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Parkins that they got the monument sign. They got the sign on the front of the building. And I know, I think it was you, Jenny, who said that most people use a GPS today. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to allow the sign or we can have more discussion at the subcommittee.
Of course, the monument sign is really a multi-tenant sign. They're only, they're only one person on the sign. Could make your sign for them.
Can, can we just let the applicant wait, make any comments and then we'll continue with commissioners? Is there somebody from the applicant here?
Yes, thank you, my name is Damian Honda from Expedite the Deal. And I was listening to the commission's comments here. So. The vantage point that you have on the screen right now. The red and blue arrows would be able to see the sign on that canopy which is marked in yellow. However, they would not be able to see that wall sign because it is blocked by the mature trees. They also cannot see the ground sign. If you, if you are facing the way that the red arrow is facing, the text is very small to see that ground sign. So understanding that people do use GPS, there are people who. You know, do come from other areas that maybe didn't know the address or, or have time to look it up and they may be coming from different vantage points. And not using their GPS and still would need to be able to identify the bank. The only way that you can really see the ground sign clearly is coming down Bridgeport Avenue and that's as long as it's not blocked by another vehicle. And putting it on Commerce Drive as Commissioner Panico had stated that it is below the grade and there are mature trees over there would be really difficult to see. The wall sign if we put it behind the canopy on the wall at that point and it would really only serve us a small, very visible view if at any. Coming for, from Commerce Drive, it wouldn't. It would have a disadvantage still to the other intersections, which is what they're trying to do. Trying to make it a little bit more visible just because of the unique way that the, that this sits on this triangle. Type of, you know, with the intersections here.
All right, now did the bank indicate to you the reason why they asked you to include one for the canopy? Or are they having customers coming in saying that they can't find them or what led to this, anything in particular?
I will let my colleague Tracy speak to that.
Okay.
Tracy Gill here on the phone, there she is.
Good evening, members of the commission, thank you for listening to us this evening. The bank has not indicated any specific reason as to why they would like a sign on that canopy. But in multiple conversations, after talking to staff and trying to get the bank to relocate the sign, they felt that this was a prominent location for the sign to be for their customers. Piggybacking off of what Damian said, not everybody is using GPS technology and GPS technology isn't always accurate. So sometimes, you know, people could be from out of air, from another area out of town, they're not familiar with the intersection. They know that a Chase Bank is in that general area, but they're not exactly sure where it is. It's a little confusing nowadays with the pandemic, everybody is using drive through. So it's a little confusing when you can't tell if there's a Chase Bank from that intersection, you could very well pass it. And what, what you have is a situation of people that are headed with a blue arrow is. Where they're, oh, they get to that entrance and they, they see it and then they slam on their brakes to try to turn into that parking lot. What we're trying to avoid is a safety hazard of people that cannot readily identify this destination to be able to readily identify it. To prevent them from slamming on their brakes, making erratic turns. You know, causing traffic hazards that are caused by lack of visibility. In this case, the building sits a substantial amount of distance also off of the roadway. Making those tiny little letters not easily visible on those ground signs. And so there's, you know, it's a very large intersection, it appears to be a very wide roadway, I'm sure you are all more familiar with it than I am. And we're just trying to make sure that the people that are traveling here can find it efficiently and safely.
I understand. Okay, any, who, Commissioner Mato, you were trying to make some comments.
Yeah, well, I think the, this speaker is saying what I was on my mind, I think anything that would help people to get through an intersection without hesitation, without. You know, not knowing where they're going, I think that's important. I have no objection to taking a ride by and consulting with the sign committee about it, I have, I'm finding it difficult to really visualize. I mean, I know this bank, but I have no objection to taking that extra step if that would be helpful. But I do think, you know, it's a very busy intersection and, and I think if. You know, people can see where they're going, that, that's very helpful, GPS or no GPS.
Whoever's controlling the visuals, can you find the one that says west northwest view, it's as if you were in the traffic light. Where the blue arrow was, keep going. Keep going. That one, okay, so you're at the traffic light where Walgreens is to your left. And there's the canopy there. So that's the visual that people coming up Commerce from the Brute. Area could see it. You know, my concern is that, too, people that happen to go up Commerce, they find it. Then they turn around at some point up one of the driveways off of Commerce, they come down. If they don't realize how busy that road is. And they try to cut across those two lanes of traffic, which they're not supposed to do because it looks like there's solid yellow lines anyways. But they may not think to go to the intersection, take a left and enter by Pet Supplies Plus. So. I don't know, I, I. I will go along with the majority if people want to refer this to the sign committee. But the earliest then that it could be on the agenda would be when, Mr. Rosetti?
Chairwoman, I, I'd like to make a comment. Looking at it from, from this vantage point, they are in that rounded part of the building. So instead of having the sign over the door or the awning, why don't the, or the canopy, why don't they consider putting it up above on that rounded part? I, I'm, I'm concerned about swaying from our regulations that pertain to everyone. And so I don't think we can pick and choose which area should conform to regulations and which area should not, especially this is not a PDD. The, the purpose of monument signs are to provide a, a number, right, which we ask most landlords to put the number up on top. So that should be the identifier that that is. 309 Bridgeport Avenue or what the address is, and if somebody's looking for the bank and has not been there, which is kind of hard to believe. That bank's been there for a very long time. They should know that 309 is where the bank is and they would pull in there, there are two entrances and exits at this location, so. You know, I, I'm not aware of any traffic accidents or hazards that have happened as a result of people trying to turn into this bank. But there's other things with people running red lights for sure, but I, I don't think any big safety concern has been raised at this location due to people not knowing that the bank is there.
Okay, is, so. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, so taking the sign from over the doorway and shifting it to the left so it wraps around. Commissioner Parkins, you think that would be a, a solution?
Yeah, so, so from this vantage point where we're looking at this photo, where that rounded building is, if they could put the Chase logo up there on top, that would suffice, that would give them the one sign per side of the building.
Okay, and was that Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes, it was. I was, I was about to say the same thing that, that Commissioner Parkins was looking at from this angle. That the, the curvature of the building might be the better spot for that sign. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna just echo what Commissioner Parkin says regarding the, the accidents at that entranceway. I think we have more accidents at the next entranceway up to the. You guys know which one I'm talking about, so we're not gonna go down that road, but I think that's for more of the accidents happening further.
Right, now, so Mr. Rosetti, I had asked if this is tabled so that the sign committee can review it. The next time it could be on the agenda is when?
August 10.
Most likely that the next regular meeting, which is August 10.
I'll just, I liked that suggestion that Commissioner Parkins made. And I think that might be a way to expedite this decision.
I, I'll also say that I like the suggestion that Commissioner Parkins made and I'll also say that. There are, you know, a few hotels in the Bridgeport area, Bridgeport Avenue area, I think, I can think of three right now. And it is a center of Commerce, so there's a lot of people coming from out of town. So I think it does make sense to have a sign there, especially for people that are, you know, unfamiliar with the area. I would just say that, you know, it's probably important that, you know, we're following our regulations, so. I don't, you know, have a problem with referring it to the sign committee. But I'm willing to go with, you know, however the group wants to go, but overall, I think it does make sense to have a sign there.
Okay, all right, so let me ask first, how many people would want this to be tabled and referred to the sign committee? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, Commissioner Parkins?
Yes, I would, but I think we need to make sure that Josh or someone checks with the applicant to, to make sure that, 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 that sign is feasible to place on that rounded portion of the building.
Oh, absolutely.
If they're still on, they can.
Yep.
They can make a comment.
Wait a minute, let me just go on to.
So yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Mato?
Whatever, whatever, any, I have no objection to meeting with the sign committee or taking a ride by, so.
Commissioner Wodowski?
If they're willing to move the sign to that rounded section like Commissioner Parkin does.
This is a moment on that, it's.
No, 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 let me, let me finish. I, I would have no problem saying if they'd agreed to it tonight on the phone, because I think they're still on, I would have no problem otherwise from building the subcommittee with it to discuss it at that point.
Commissioner Usel? Sign committee or not?
Yes, I think it makes sense just to make sure we're following the regulations.
Okay, all right, and I said I would go along with what the majority wanted. So does the applicant want to make any comments about the suggestion to. Take the sign from the doorway and shift it to being around the curve and, and not having one on the canopy? Is that something you have to go back to your client?
Unfortunately, we would not be able to speak to that, we would have to take that information to Chase and let them review it. I do want to ask a question if I may, Madam Chairman. If the. The, if this goes to the sign committee, does it go to the sign committee and then come back to the members of the commission?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and then at the committee, are members of the commission on that committee as well?
Yeah, they're present right here, it's, Commissioner Mato is the chair of the zoning subcommittee which takes care of signs.
Okay.
Commissioner Parkins and Commissioner Wodowski are the other two members.
Okay, I want to be able to take this information to Chase because I know they're going to ask me. Is it possible to say, okay, if this was in front of those members this evening, we'd probably be looking at a denial of two signs, correct? Because I've, I've been keeping tallies, I've been keeping tallies over here of what you have all said and. It seems like the majority of the commission is opposed to two signs, but in, in favor of them taking one sign and putting it on the curved portion of the building.
Yeah, I think that's. Didn't we say it's?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mato.
It could be two sides, but just not on the canopy, that's what I understood. If they put it on that rounded part of the building, that would be the second side.
No.
No. No. Commissioner Parkins, why don't you?
So they can't have two, per our regulations, you can't have two signs on the same frontage, which the canopy and over the door sign be two signs facing Bridgeport Avenue frontage. So what we're suggesting is putting it somewhere where it's visible, that you're trying to get the visibility factor to put it on that rounded portion versus the canopy or the door.
Okay.
Okay, all right, yeah, so.
My understanding is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's our regulations, it's not that we're, we're just, you know, willy-nilly saying we oppose it, that's our regulations.
That's fine, and if I go back to Chase Bank and tell them all of this and then they decide that they're just going to stick with one sign, we still have to come back to the commission for the sign approval, correct?
Yeah, for the new replacement channel letters, yeah. Yeah, I, this is a good visual, that's right up there. And, you know, the Pet Supplies Plus one is offset, it's not over their doorway. So this could be, I think it could be an attractive location for having the, the channel letters curve around the, the building facade.
And I appreciate that, they give me a lot of leeway, but they don't give me the authority to speak on the fly, so.
I understand.
To ask that we table it to the sign committee and then I will work with staff and we will get some feedback from Chase Bank and come back. To staff because we really do want to try to work with you.
Oh, I understand, and we'd like to do the same as well with you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so motion to table? Please, from someone?
Make a motion to table.
Okay, motion to table from Commissioner Kelly, is there a second?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Usel will second, and on the motion to table from Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Usel. I'll do a roll call, Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Parkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mato?
Aye.
Commissioner Usel?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion to the table is passed six to zero, so staff will be in touch with the zoning subcommittee. To set up a meeting and do whatever is appropriate, the drive by or whatever. And then get back to us as to when it will be next on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your time this evening. Okay, going on next, on the agenda is application 5025 Blakeney Construction. Rio. Five, nine, Bridgeport Avenue for a sign. This was, it's a freestanding monument sign at the entrance to the parking lot from old Bridgeport Avenue. This application was. This application was first heard at our June eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. And we saw that the applicant presented two sign options. Option A is higher than option B by four and a half inches and wider by five. The font is italicized on option A. While the font in option B is not, the sign is held up by two posts. Um, we, after we noted the size and the style of the two options, the commission had. Questions about the sign posts, about landscaping, ground illumination, location, electricity. No representative of the applicant was present at that meeting to answer our questions. And we voted to table any action on this application. And requested that a representative be present when the application was on an upcoming agenda. So is there a representative of the application applicant, uh, present?
Yes.
And who was that, please?
Commissioner Harder, this is Attorney Steve Bellis.
Hello, Attorney Bellis.
How are you? I represent the applicant and I believe he submitted a a letter through his, uh, sign engineer.
Okay. Does staff have that information?
Um, I have a series of emails, not necessarily a letter, um, clarifying some of the questions the commission had, um. Go ahead.
Let me go through. First thing I had was an explanation of the exterior surface treatments for the two sign posts. I had asked, were the sign posts solid stone or is it a wood post that is stone faced? Do they answer that?
Uh, they did not. I I believe it's gonna be solid stone.
Okay, but that's still not.
That that is correct. It would be solid stone.
Okay, so we, uh, Attorney Bellis, you're indicating definitely it's a solid stone, stone, uh, two posts.
Helpers, yes.
Okay. All right. And, uh, were there any plans for ground illumination and electricity?
Um, no ground illumination. The, uh, street light is actually almost directly over the sign.
Okay. And the next thing that we had was, um, landscaping.
Uh, there will be some sort of landscaping. They're not sure if it's gonna be just a, you know, a mulch bed with. Uh, little shrubs or flowers, but it will be landscaped underneath the sign.
Okay, so mulch and flowers. All right. Right. Now, any commissioners have any questions for Attorney Bellis? Or staff?
I I have a quick question. It's Commissioner Wodamski.
Go ahead.
This this is gonna be going where? On the on the corner by the Walgreens Plaza?
No, 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 this is, uh, on Old Bridgeport Avenue, the new.
Oh, all right. I'm I'm sorry. I'm at the wrong side. This is down by, uh, this is Jimmy Blakeman's thing next to the car dealership.
The apartment building.
Yep, next to the car dealership. Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Isn't there another visual that shows the entrance to the parking lot, Mr. O'Neil? There you go.
Right. I I'm thinking Blakeman up the other end.
Yeah, oh, no, yeah. Okay, so there's the two. Now, the one thing is. Um, we have, we see the, uh, street numbers down at the bottom. We. You prefer that they be at the top. So, uh, what's the commission's, uh? Preference on that?
Carolyn? Um, Commissioner Parkins, we typically ask, um, that 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 the number be actually in that so circle where that. Upper circle artwork where the tree is, so that it's visible, um, on on all applications.
That should not be a problem. I will tell them to move it to the circle above.
Okay.
Com- Commissioner Harder?
Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
I think we also asked him about the durability of of the two which thick sign foam. Uh, I I I think we we wanted to know what that meant.
Oh, that's right.
I I do have an email from, um, Mark from the sign company. Um, he said the sign is made out of only one material. Which is called out in the drawing, obviously sign foam, um, very high quality material that has taken the place of wood for carved signs. And that's, that's how he leaves it.
Okay. Does that help you, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, it doesn't show the durability of it, you know, can it be gouged out or, you know, it's it's not wood. So I'm not quite sure if it helps me or not.
Yeah, are you thinking more like foam core that you could punch it and it would leave a dent?
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I can quickly look up sign foam to see if.
Is it a composition of something or or, you know?
Attorney Bellis, do you know anything about that?
Chemically speaking, no. I know they use it because they don't want the wood to rot.
Okay, have we seen this before in town?
Yeah, that would be a good question.
I I I believe you have. Yeah. I don't think it's a new product.
Okay. Give, um, Mr. O'Neil a couple minutes to see if he can locate something.
In the meantime, Commissioner Harder, I have a question. Will the sign be front and back? Or like, will there be anything on the other side of the sign?
Good question.
I I didn't think, I don't think there is. I I I thought it was on one side.
Maybe they could put, have a good day, drive safely on the back.
That might end up being there.
Yeah.
With graffiti.
Yeah, exactly. Now, that was a very good point, Commissioner Yu Sal. Mr., uh, Attorney Bellis, would you please convey that to your, uh, client?
I I agree. A nice message, have a great day or drive safely would be very, a very nice thing for the tenants.
Yeah, they could, they can even do seasonal decals.
Good, good suggestion.
Um, I can't find anything.
Understand, when you view it from the back, there'll be two horizontal members that support the sign.
I can't find anything about the material in terms of, you know, if it dents or not, um, but in terms of. Withstanding weather, you know, it won't warp or anything like wood might, um, or, you know, fade or anything like that.
Usually I've seen these signs mounted on a building, so the back is mounted to the building. I've not seen them freestanding, but. I haven't seen a lot of signs.
Well, I think there's some, um, on, uh, Beard Sawmill Road or something rather, somewhere along the way. But I understand what you mean. Um, Mr. Panico, so, um, what's the commission's, um? Preference? Do you want this to be passed with, uh? Condition that staff. Get a clarification and, uh, the final determination that this is a sign that will hold up to the elements?
I would imagine that they're they're paying for a sign that's gonna hold up to the elements, that they're gonna have to keep replacing it. It's gonna be a. Direct reflection on the quality of their complex. Broken sign. So I would assume that they're doing something that's gonna be, have more longevity than a regular wooden sign. So. Other than the number being on top, I have no problem with this sign. I I prefer the solid one rather than spacers being shown, but. Um.
Yeah.
Option A with the number on top.
Yeah. I like that printing better, but I don't have strong feeling. I wouldn't oppose it if they preferred the block lettering. But I do like the cursive lettering. Uh, and I agree, you know, using synthetic materials. In building is pretty much the norm because of, they do last better as a rule, so. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, uh, does everybody want to move forward on this particular sign application?
Sure.
Which which one are we gonna go with the?
Okay, if we're gonna go ahead with it, there's no objections, then, um. Commissioner Kelly, are you an A or a B?
I'm an A.
Um, and let me just clarify, A with the street number above.
That is correct.
In that circle.
In the circle, no trees, but the number. Okay, Commissioner Parkins, A with the.
A, prefer A.
Commissioner Mato?
Same, A.
Okay, Commissioner Yu Sal?
A.
Commissioner Wodamski?
A a letter A, but is there, since they have the trees on there, can we swap? I know we're gonna put the number in the top. Can we put the trees at the bottom? So I think it does add class to it.
It, I I would leave that up to them because just may not work.
A letter A with the number on the top, obviously.
Yep, okay. And, uh, I would vote for option A for sure with the, uh, street number button top. All right, so we got that. Is there anybody that wants, if any other further discussion?
Okay, I understand. I will convey to the, uh, client and thank you all for.
No, we're not done yet.
That was just the option.
That's.
Oh, I apologize. I thought that, okay.
Okay, so now is there any commissioner that would like to move to approve? Option A on application fifty twenty five and use that sign?
With the, uh, numbers on top.
Okay, Commissioner Mato has, uh, made the motion to approve application five oh two five. Option A with the numbers on top. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Commissioner Wodamski.
Okay, there's second Commissioner Wodamski and the motion to approve Commissioner Mato, seconded by Commissioner Wodamski. I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Mato?
Hi.
Commissioner Wodamski?
Hi.
Commissioner Yu Sal?
Hi.
Commissioner Parkins?
Hi.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Motion has passed six zero. So we have option A. Street number on top. And, uh, I think that's it. Okay. Next agenda item. Is new business, application twenty dash twelve, Petromont Place, Good Guys Development, um, LLC. At Petromont Lane, Assessor's Map sixty six, Lot twenty four and PDD one hundred. On two point one acres for final development plan approval of an apartment building with thirteen percent. Six of forty seven affordable housing units and onsite parking. Um, before we move further, there was a question by Commissioner Wodamski as to whether or not. He would be, uh, eligible to vote. Now, Mr. Panico. Can you clarify, our sequence was that at, we did the initial development plan passage?
This, this is a completely separate second application. The initial application for concept plan approval and adoption of the of the zone was already executed. That's done. Now we're in an administrative phase under a new application for approval of the final detailed development plans.
Right. So our initial resolution was on March twenty fourth. So that's done. On May twenty sixth, two months later, is when we were all present. And we had a discussion of the final detailed development plan resolution. Um, let me just mention in my notes. Um. On May twenty sixth, the application was on the agenda to approve the final development plan. Prior to the reading of the resolution, the commission and applicant discussed the driveway entrance and its direction around the building. Were terminated at that time at an access point for emergency responders from Petromont Lane. There was also discussion about Petromont Lane and the right property line where a wall exists behind Santos Plaza. Um, after Mr. Panico read the resolution before any voting. Uh, because the commission had further questions about the proposal, the commission tabled any action. Since that May twenty sixth meeting, staff and the applicant had discussions. Uh, which resulted in the revised, uh, a revised resolution that Mr. O'Neil emailed to everyone at the end of last week. Um, so perhaps we could read the resolution, Mr. Panico? Yeah, if commissioners can mark up.
By way of background, the applicant did redesign the entryway. Uh, and provided entrance and exit and exit directly from Petromont Lane. Uh, so it comes in one way, circles around the building and out the other side.
Mm-hmm. Um, Mr. O'Neil, are any of those visuals available?
Um, Alex is controlling the screen.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. Okay, so this is the the most recent final revision.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, so, um, the the resolution is very similar to what we had prepared before. We just went through and cleaned it up to represent. The changes that were made, et cetera. Uh, but it's application twenty twelve. Uh, Attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of Good Guys LLC, final site development plan approval, forty seven residential units. Uh, Euro Petromont Lane between Quorum and River, uh, Connecticut Route one ten. It's identified as Plan Development District number one oh one. Uh, by way of background, the applicant, uh, has received conditional approval of initial development concept plans. And the adoption of PDD one oh one for a multi-story residential building with not more than forty seven residential units. A reduction of the fifty six units originally requested. Of the forty seven, there will be nine studios, twenty three one bedrooms and fifteen one bedroom plus office. And it's in a four-story building, onsite parking for not less than eighty nine cars. The overall site is two point one two acres, has a hundred ninety seven feet of frontage on the north side of Petromont Lane. And it extends to a depth of about three hundred and forty five feet. The property is owned by the applicant's Good Guys Development LLC. The proposed development consists of a single residential structure having three stories on the southerly side. Four stories on the northerly side adapting to the site topography. And to avoid excessive site excavation and regrading. The sound, the building has a ground floor footprint of twelve thousand one hundred square feet. It's accessed by a single driveway from Petromont Lane, serving both sides of the building. Uh, commission, I I called it a single driveway because it's, it is median divided. The commission approved concept plans and adoption of PDD one oh one, requiring not less than six of the apartments. Be set aside as affordable housing units in accordance with the requirements of Connecticut general statutes. And must reflect a mix of all dwelling types. Final development plans submitted for the proposal are entitled detailed development plans for multifamily residential. Petromont Place, Zero Petromont Lane, Shell, Connecticut, prepared by Rose Tiso and Company LLC. Architect, surveyors and engineers with site plans dated revised six twenty four twenty one. And architectural stated revised three twenty nine twenty one. With exterior elevations further revised six twenty three twenty one. The commission is familiar with the area and existing site conditions, has completed its most recently reviewed revised plans for consistency. With the approved initial development concept plans. And after further staff discussions of the remaining concerns with the applicant, final modifications were incorporated. And revised plans were submitted on the basis of that final staff and commission review of the revised plans. And the concerns noted in the conditional approval of the initial plans, the following observations and findings are noted. Said PDD one oh one was adopted effective April nine, two thousand twenty one and accommodates the proposed four-story residential building. For not more than forty seven dwelling units. Said architectural designs are well, we reflect a well-designed residential building with a gabled roof and dormers. The exterior siding materials are a combination of vinyl platters, vinyl shingles and limited amounts of vertical siding at the lower lowest level. With accents of thin stone veneer at the base and around entry features. The end elevation facing Petromont Lane has been enhanced with an architectural entry feature and vertical stacked windows above. The proposed architectural appear to be consistent with earlier commission approval. And the commission is in agreement with exterior materials and finishes as proposed. Number two, sole access to the site is provided by Petromont Lane, a substandard city street. Petromont Lane improvements are mandated to meet the needs of the proposed development. And will be the responsibility of the applicant to provide those necessary improvements at city standards to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Originally, the original mandated minimum pavement width of twenty four feet for two-way traffic. Is currently indicated as twenty three feet for better accommodation to be available right away. The existing utility pole near the site entrance is in close proximity to the proposed curbing at the entry. And must be moved somewhat for safety purposes. As shown, also shown are needed curb line improvements for safety reasons. At the Quorum Avenue intersection with Constitution Boulevard. The city agrees to make adjustments to the Quorum Avenue drainage and curbing geometry on the north side of Quorum Avenue. Where it intersects the easterly curb line of Constitution Boulevard South. In the event the city does not make these improvements in a timely manner, the applicant will need to assume responsibility for implementing those improvements. As well as the improvements to Petromont Lane and continuing its proposed southerly curbing. To a proper connection with the Constitution Boulevard South curbing. Thereby eliminating, thereby establishing a controlled edge of traffic flow. The city engineer has determined that the proposed intersection adjustments will eliminate the need for a raised ion. And further, the city will not allow one to be installed. It it is the responsibility of the applicant. To assure the timely completion of all mandated improvements to Petromont Lane. And the Quorum Avenue Constitution Boulevard South intersection curbing. Accordingly, the applicant is hereby cautioned that no occupancy permit. Accordingly, the applicant is hereby cautioned that no occupancy permits will be issued by the Shell and Planning and Zoning until said off-site improvements are completed and available for public travel. As a result of further engineering study of Petromont Lane by the applicant, the vertical site distance constraints due to roadway grays has dictated the need to limit site access to a single location at the crest of the hill where adequate site distance is available. The applicant has concluded that the commission's earlier request for two-way circulation around the building is not feasible. And the parking layout and driveway is now proposed for one-way circulation from the entry, around the building and back to the entry. The earlier proposal for a dead-end layout with an emergency connection back to Petromont Lane is no longer needed. In the absence of any other viable alternatives, staff believes the current proposal is acceptable as shown. Since the one-way entrance to next driveway has no abutting parking, a pavement width of twenty feet is proposed to satisfy the fire marshal. The climate of fire marshal. Site engineering, site plan engineering drawings have been detailed with respect to grading, drainage sidewalks, lighting, curbing and the provision of four electric vehicle charging stations. Said four EV charging spaces are in excess of the required eighty-nine spaces. On-site sidewalks are proposed around the entire building. The commission may wish to require the addition of a small section of onsite sidewalk to connect to the building side, to connect, not to, to connect the building sidewalk to the southeast corner of the site at the Santos property line. After resolving the onsite driveway circulation matters, the following additional areas of concern remain to be addressed. The applicant has not not yet provided the commission any geologic information regarding onsite subsurface. Any subsurface or any information about test pits, boring data or other resources regarding depth to rock, potential rock removal and the extent of necessary blasting. If it is determined that blasting is required, the applicant will be required to comply with the provisions of the general Connecticut general statutes outlining the requirements for blasting in Connecticut. The statutes delegate enforcement by the city's fire marshal, who has an established protocol for all blasting operations. The fire marshal's protocol requires, among other things, the mandatory notification of all residents within five hundred feet of the blast site at least nine days prior to the start of blasting. But in general, the commission will now take a step back and leave the blasting to the fire marshal following state sanctions. Item B, subparagraph B. Additional information has been provided with respect to the proposed Versalock Bronco two retaining wall details. Surface texture and color has been discussed with the commission. The rear retaining wall height varies from ten feet to twenty feet high. And the sideline wall varies from three feet to nine feet, except at the rear corner where it rises to meet the rear wall. Consistent with other onsite fencing, the applicant proposes dark color vinyl coated chain link safety fencing behind the top of the wall. This fence will be tied in with the adjacent property owner's fence near the front of the site and will be provided with a maintenance gate. So it'll be secured so that people can't go walking in that area between the two fences. Since the adjacent Santos property line fence is some seven feet or more from the current property line, in order to secure the site, the applicant's safety fence will need to extend out to the Santos property. The applicant will need to obtain the necessary permission of the abutting property owner. It should be noted that regardless of soil or rock conditions encountered, there shall be no deviation from the proposed wall and fencing treatment as shown without the specific review and commission approval of alternative treatments. In other words, if they find a different set of rock conditions and they want to come in and and start changing walls around or eliminating walls, it has to be put before the commission and the commission will have to give that approval. Subparagraph C, the right sideline retaining wall safety fence appears by scale to be about seven and a half feet from the property line, while the adjacent owner's existing fence is seven to ten feet from the property line. Because of the proximity, virtually all natural onsite vegetation will be lost behind this wall. And the proposed landscape plan only calls for dogwood trees planted twenty-five feet apart. Adequacy of this landscaping is questionable and the landscape plan for the area may need to be reexamined and strengthened after final grading is completed. Also, as previously noted, the use of feather green, feather reed grass as foundation plantings, especially on the north, the northerly building wall should be reconsidered. Introducing additional evergreen shrubs may be more desirable. In addition, the standard notes must be added to the landscape plan regarding plant material survival and acknowledging the right of the commission to require additional supplementary plantings as deemed necessary. And finally, D. The proposed, the ground identification sign has been relocated to the proposed dividing aisle on at the entry. For better identification and visibility, an alternative location may be appropriate. All details, so they may very well be moving that sign. All details of this sign, including final sign location, related landscaping and lighting provisions, if any, shall be submitted for commission approval prior to installation. Paragraph three, all utility services will be provided from Petromont Lane and all onsite utility lines will be located underground. All stormwater runoff will be collected and conveyed to the city's storm drainage system in Petromont Lane after passing through onsite underground detention galleys, water quality and outlet control structures. Four inland wetlands and water pollution control authority approvals have been obtained as well as approvals of the city engineer and the fire marshal. All outstanding concerns of the staff, commission, city engineer departments must be addressed prior to sign off of the final approvals of the final site development plans. After completion of its discussion of said final revised site development plans, if it is the consensus of the commission that it's prepared to act with the conditions specified, staff has prepared the following draft resolution for possible action. Whereas the commission has received initial development concept plan approval of PDD one oh one with conditions allowing for the construction of forty-seven unit multi-family residential building on the two point one-two acre site running up Petromont Lane and has submitted final site development plans, that's the terminology from the zoning regulations, including modified architectural design and revised engineering engineered plans as well as plans for the needed improvements to the public street system in order to provide the commission with the required information and details necessary for review and final approval. And whereas the commission is familiar with the subject site and the applicable provisions of PDD one oh one and has revisited and has visited the site, discussed and reviewed in detail the proposed modified plans and all documents relative thereto. And subject to the comments set forth above, the commission notes the following. One, the applicant application complies with the applicable zoning requirements and specific provisions and stipulations of PDD one oh one. Number two, approvals of the inland wetland commission and WPCA have been obtained. The subject final site development plan will require further revision and modification to to resolve and address all outstanding concerns expressed by the commission as noted herein or upon final review. Favorable reports from the city engineer and fire marshal have been received and any further modification needed will be addressed prior to the required endorsement of the final site development plans. Existing and proposed utility services are adequate for the proposed development. All utility services will be located underground. The proposed parking will be adequate to serve the proposed building. And the applicant's professional traffic report notes that with the proposed improvements, the projected traffic will not overload the street system in the area. The commission will continue to work with the applicant, city engineer, street department and traffic division of the police department as necessary regarding the Petromont Lane improvements and the Quorum Avenue slash Constitution Boulevard South intersection improvements. Now therefore, on the basis of the above, Shell Planning and Zoning Commission hereby takes the following actions. In accordance with the provisions of section thirty-four to Shell and Zoning Regulation, this commission hereby approves the subject final site development plans for said forty-seven unit residential apartment development subject to the following conditions and adjustments. One, full satisfaction of any final outstanding concerns of the city engineer, water pollution control, fire marshal, local traffic authority and any and all other applicable municipal boards and commissions. We think we have all that. Two, final modification of architectural and engineering details and controls to address all outstanding commission concerns. Although the commission has agreed with the selection of exterior materials and finishes, the submission of samples of the actual proposed exterior materials, colors and finishes shall be provided if requested. Three, further modification and adjustment of the final site development plans as necessary in response to any additional concerns of the commission and staff that may arise during the finalization of reviews and construction. Any disturbed and undeveloped areas of the site shall be appropriately restored. No permit shall be issued to allow any construction prior to the endorsement of said final site development plans. Four, posting of appropriate bonding in an amount as determined by the commission upon recommendation of the city engineer to assure site restoration and/or the completion of critical site improvements in other areas of concern. An additional performance plan shall be posted to guarantee the completion of all off-site improvements to public streets and infrastructure. Amount as determined by the city engineer and subject to approval of the city engineer. As the public street improvement, upon release of the performance bond, a one-year maintenance bond must be posted. A separate bond to assure the installation and maintenance of all required onsite sediment and erosion controls shall be posted and continued in effect until completion of site construction and restabilization of the ground surfaces. So that's the draft resolution.
Okay, um, thank you. The first concern I have that, want to make sure that the applicant is aware of, is that at the beginning, number two, talks about the existing utility pole near the site entrances in close proximity to the proposed curbing at the entry and must be moved somewhat for safety purposes. I did have the occasion to be in the neighborhood this morning on my way back from Stratford and I went up Petromont Lane. And when you're parked at the exit to Santos Plaza on Petromont and you look towards Quorum Road, you're going to see that that utility pole isn't a move somewhat kind of situation, but it has to be moved an appropriate amount to allow the curbing that starts at Santos Plaza where the road was widened and already improved to continue to Quorum Road. There is two vehicles that could be parked side by side on Petromont by that driveway exit and the road narrows and becomes one lane. And I don't believe any of the commissioners would like to see that condition to continue at all. There, and the only other thing that I'm concerned about is that because some of the site has already been cleared, there's a large rock that's been exposed when you're looking into the site and it's not straight in the middle, but a little bit to the left. And if the applicant could just clarify with staff how that rock is going to be removed, if that is one that's going to need to be blasted or if it can be jackhammered out with some kind of unique kind of jackhammer that goes, that's attached to the end of some kind of piece of equipment. So but Mr. Panico, can you just clarify? There's that number. Number two B talks about halfway down. The applicant will need to secure the necessary, I know, sorry, wrong place. It had to do with the it's on the previous, oh, here it is. In number two, halfway down. It's in the same area where they're talking about the traffic. Yeah, well, it's number two. My paging may be a little different. On page two, it's, it starts off sole access to the site. Yeah, so halfway down. We talked about it is the responsibility of the applicant to assure the timely completion of all mandated improvements to the public street system. So could speak to that, please?
Yes, you know, the traffic report and everything that the commission took into account, wanted to prove the rezoning, anticipated improvements being made to that intersection in order to discourage the cutting across of the of traffic that would be heading in this to this destination. And at one time we talked about an island, et cetera. After further engineering and so on, it came down to adjusting the curb line on the, well, as you exit Quorum on the right-hand side, adjusting the curb line, changing the drainage a little bit. On the left-hand side, it requires cleaning up the curb line and make sure you have continuity of curbing. And the city has said that they would do those things. The commission, since it relies on those improvements to be sure that no traffic is going, no, no traffic issues are going to be generated and that the traffic report is being satisfied, is simply warning the applicant, if for some reason the city isn't able to proceed with those changes, they will have to step in and do what little work is left in order to fulfill our obligations.
And who is it that's going to check to see has how much of a completion?
Well, we would get, we would get a report from the city engineer.
Okay.
I'm not saying that should be allowed to start their work. They should be obviously should be allowed to start their construction activity.
Mr. O'Neil, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I believe the the curb realignment on on the right side, if you're exiting Quorum to go on Constitution has already been done.
Okay, has already been done? Oh, and the drainage has been put in?
I believe so, yeah.
There was drainage involved in it?
The last time I drove by there, the curb has definitely been moved from where it was into a more pronounced.
Okay, well, all we need is a sign off by the city engineer. Fine, you know.
Right. And not to beat a dead horse, but going back to that utility pole. Mr. Panico, is that another sign off?
Or you can, you can secure from the applicant whatever assurances you want before you sign those final drawings. At this point in time, the applicant is not ready to to say what that answer is. I'm sure he wants, he's going to have to meet with the utility companies and discuss the situation and see what needs to be done. What's the proper solution?
Right, and that's fair. So, Zenia? Then just the last thing, yes, at the very end, it talked about submission of samples of the actual proposed exterior materials.
That's commissioner's choice. I mean, you did you seemed to be happy with them and you saw the renderings, et cetera. But seeing pictures sometimes isn't the same as seeing the actual materials.
Yeah, no, I think that's
I left it open for the commission to exercise that final decision. If they want to see it, they can ask the applicant.
At some point in the future.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you're unsure about it, what you've looked at so far, you can ask for it now.
Right, okay. Well, see, the thing is with all our Zoom meetings, we haven't been able to put our hands on the product, to tell you the truth. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that has been the case.
I'm sure the applicant has a certain intent to accomplish what he wants to accomplish. And he showed pictures of it, but holding it is a lot different from just looking at pictures.
Oh, absolutely. So, all right, does any commissioner have any questions for Mr. Panico or on this particular resolution? Okay, hearing none. Is there any commissioner that would like to? Okay, hearing none. Is there any commissioner that would like to move this particular resolution?
So move commissioner.
Okay, there's a a motion to approve Commissioner Kelly, is that correct?
That's correct.
By Commissioner Kelly, is there a second from anyone?
Commissioner.
Okay, ahead. Commissioner Yu Seo?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, so on the motion to approve move by Commissioner Kelly and seconded by Commissioner Yu Seo. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner uh, Parkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mato?
Aye.
Commissioner Wodamski?
I'm willing to abstain.
Okay. Make a note of that. Uh, Commissioner Yu Seo?
Aye.
That's one, two, three, four, five, and I'm number six. Commissioner Harder votes aye. So the motion has passed.
Chairwoman, if if I may just ask why Commissioner Wodamski is abstaining?
Commissioner Wodamski, you go ahead. You have the floor. You're on mute though.
I wasn't privy to all the conversations about the original project as it took place during the COVID when I was able to make the meetings. I am um. I'm not too keen on the project from the get go, so I'm going to abstain from it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the uh, this particular motion has passed with a vote of five zero one. All right, that finishes that portion of the agenda. Um, next on the agenda is new business. Application twenty one seventeen, Daybreak Bridge, Dominic Thomas, Daybreak Bridge LLC eighty five. River Road. Petition for a modification of approved special exception application number nineteen dash oh six. For an additional two units in building D for a total of thirty six units in R three zone. Is there a motion to accept for application twenty one seventeen? And set a public hearing. Is there a specific date from staff yet?
Um, the the twenty eighth of this month.
July twenty eighth.
Correct.
Okay. So that's uh, is there any uh, commissioner that would like to make a motion to accept twenty one seventeen and set a public hearing date of July twenty eighth?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion from Commissioner Mato, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Kelly has seconded. So we'll do a roll call vote on the motion to accept instead of public hearing for July twenty eighth. Commissioner Parkins?
I will vote aye, but just note that I'm not available on the twenty eighth. I will be on vacation.
Oh, poor thing.
Good for you.
Commissioner Mato?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu Seo?
Aye.
Commissioner Wodamski?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, so we will have a public hearing on that on uh. July twenty eighth. Okay, next item is the public portion. Mr. Rosetti, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any agenda? Any item not on the agenda?
I think we were just asking any attendees who are currently listening in if you'd like to. Comment on any items on the agenda to the commission. Now's the time to raise your hand on Zoom. Uh, just give them a few seconds. I see two people called in. But no comments have been received and don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay. Okay, next uh. Is other business and comments from the chair and subcommittee. Uh, I'd just like to relay that there was a S E D C meeting this morning and Mr. Grimmer, the president indicated the following. Uh, regarding two sixty seven Canal Street, Star Pin, there is only a small amount of debris left to remove from the site. Time bond. And when I say small, it looks like it's uh, from the picture that he showed, it was an area of. Um, maybe two pallets by two pallets and it was wrapped in like the orange snow fencing kind of thing. Uh, tie and bond, the environmental engineers are doing their site assessments uh, and should will be finished by the end of this month. Time bond have indicated that the results of the soil sampling is better than they expected. There are some specific areas of concerns that have elevated levels of various chemicals and compounds. Which is to be expected based on what these uh, building that previously was on the site had been used for. But Mr. Grimmer uh, said that they tie and bond assured them that it it's nothing that cannot be managed. And PCBs continue to be undetected. The final action plan is expected to be in place by the end of the year. Next, regarding two eighty seven. Two eighty one, two eighty seven Canal Street, which is Askham Hassler. Phase two of the environmental site assessment of the property is still expected to be completed by the end of September. While this property is privately owned and the city cannot do remediation. It has the ability to do investigative work on the property. At the same time, a hazardous building material investigation is being done. The third is um, Cardinal has to do with the reconstruction of Canal and Worcester Street. Intersection Cardinal Engineering received approval to proceed with the final design drawings. Uh, all comments from the city's public works director and the city engineer were received and will be addressed. And then finally regarding restoration of the Shelton Canal Lock. The S E D C is continuing plans for an environmental restoration of the analysis and historic preservation. Of the last remaining canal lock and 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 an analysis of how this area can be connected to the Houstonic Riverwalk. A request for a quote will be publicized. During July twenty first to August eleventh. Um, and it's called the RFQ. The qualification review will be held August thirty first. And it's expected that an engineering firm will be chosen in September. And hopefully the EPA will be the source for funding for the engineering costs. Commissioner Mato, you have any comments from the zoning subcommittee?
Uh, no, except we're going to be looking at the Chase Building and signage.
Exactly. Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, how about you?
Uh, I'll refer to Mr. Nappy.
Okay, I'll I'll uh, identify, uh, recognize him on my staff list. Uh, for staff, Mr. Rosetti, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, how about you? Do you have any comments about uh, Z E O enforcement?
Um, there's a lot going on, but nothing to report at this time.
No, everything is moving along then?
Moving along.
Okay, so that means that that. Liberty banner is going to come down?
It will.
Thank you. Mr. Nappy, do you have any comments about downtown?
Yeah, I do. Um, regardless of what's been on Facebook, uh, the parking signs are up directing people to the uh, public parking areas. We have about ten more to put up. Um, there's an assessment being done as to the exact location. Also, there'll be parking signs at each lot identifying as public parking. Um, so that's moving ahead. The developers are pretty active in that.
Mr. Nappy, can I just ask?
May not be necessarily the truth, but.
Yeah.
The developers did a study of area wide parking signs. And the parking signs that we have are modeled after uh, two of the municipalities that have been successful in that. So they're moving ahead with the parking. Uh, I can tell you that Perry Pettis's lot has been um, put out to contract. And Don Stanzial will be the contractor that will be developing it for Perry Pettits. So that's going to move ahead, even though the lumber prices have gone up astronomically.
That particular lot, Mr. Nappy?
That's a good sign.
Mr. Nappy?
Downtown's moving.
Mr. Nappy? That particular lot that Perry Pettis has is the empty lots the left of the um, Victorian condos. And um. To the right of the downtown pizza place.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. That's called the Donut Shop Lot.
The Donut Shop.
The Donut Shop used to be there and it tore it down. So that's what it's uh, it's known as right now, but it's the River, River View um, project.
Okay.
So they're going on, they're going in with the um, development plan that's been approved. Uh, the other thing is we did meet with um, a company called Vessel. Uh, that wanted to come in downtown and purchase the Calandro and Body parcel. Uh, however, the and I think the commissioners were at that meeting, Charlie.
Right.
The design really didn't fit into downtown. Uh, but we encouraged them to put it and look at other areas in the city where it may be more feasible to put. It's uh, more or less an affordable housing type of uh, construction. Um, so the architectural did not fit into the downtown uh, area. Uh, we are putting together a walkthrough with the departments that are called the Lofts. Which are John Getz's apartment, uh, which borders Bridge Street. That was put together, I understand, to more or less resemble a factory type of building, uh, historical look. And it really does look like a factory type of building, so. Uh, that's all I have to report. We will have a downtown committee meeting shortly. The developers wanted to wait. Uh, to the uh, after the holiday. Uh, one thing that's disrupting downtown is they're putting in a gas main. They're replacing it so all along Center Street. Part of how it will be torn up and it'll be a little difficult, not only to get buses through. Uh, but that they're going to be working at night, uh, but that some will be no parking, so. It's causing a little confusion to the uh. Uh, paria- pariters for downtown restaurants. That's all I have, Charlie, unless you have something you were at.
Yeah, I do. I do. I I just want to want to know decorative garbage cans downtown. I've only counted four. I know we have more than that. Are they going to be put out or I guess?
Yeah, I will check with that. They did purchase them and they're waiting to uh, to put them out, but I will check with that tomorrow. Uh, to see when the uh, date is. I also, the Parks and Recs Department uh, will take care of the downtown cleanup. And we'll do a periodic cleanup of the downtown area.
Has that gas line on Center Street started?
I'm sorry?
The gas line on.
It'll be starting shortly. Uh, everyone, every resident and owner has been notified of it. They're going to be working at night. Uh, from seven at night till I think six in the morning.
They have all the uh, indications on the on the uh, road for it.
Hmm, um, Mr. Nappy, uh, do you have a a date yet of for the walkthrough for the building that was?
No, I will hopefully get that tomorrow when I talk to the owner.
Okay, would you mind um, then also just checking on Beard Sorrel Mill Road? It seems like the the building that the two buildings, apartments that were put up. Right after the assisted living facility, the rear building is seems to be occupied if though they've gotten COs. Could you look into uh?
Yeah, for one of them, one of the buildings they have and the second one will have the walkthroughs. It's a uh, same as the first building.
So we can look, go into the rear building?
The second building, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that could be managed. Um, I know Mr. Um. Sanzel had said that his six unit apartment building that he purchased for the down the street from City Hall. That will be uh, at some point, I think he he's shooting for September.
Yeah, it's all fully rented, by the way.
Yeah.
As is the uh, Bridge Street Commons, which is seventy two apartments. And it's not completed, but they have only eight left. So it's a good sign that people are still moving downtown.
Hmm.
And again, renting those apartments, so.
Good.
Can I, can I just ask the um, the the replacement of the gas line, is that a uh, replacing a cast iron line? Is that what they're doing?
You know, I don't know the details. I just I will find out from the city engineer.
Probably.
But that's replacing them not only on Center Street and the House, How Avenue, but other streets in the downtown area. So I'm sure it's a replacement of the current line.
Hmm. It's good to know.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nappy or any of the staff? No. Mr. Panico, do you have any uh, comments for us?
Uh, no, nothing. Nothing has been on the agenda at any rate.
Okay.
There's always things to talk about.
That's for sure. Okay, final things then, if you can move along, is um, move motion uh, to approve the June eighth and June sixteen minutes. Um, on June eighth. Just think that we need to clarify under. Old business. We're uh, under uh, item A, application twenty one oh four Woodside Plaza. Um, it's, there's mention in the second paragraph that the drive through will stay the same. And just to clarify, that's the not a drive through as if you're going to a fast food restaurant and you go through the drive through, but. It's the driveway area to the rear portion of the property. So I didn't want that to be misleading. Um, the only other thing uh, to further down just before the motion. Um. Notations were made. Uh. There was comments about the five foot walk walkway in front of the buildings. Think we need to clarify that that five foot walkway is immediately in front of the buildings. I think somebody might take it that that five foot walkway may be out by the street and that's not what we um, talked about. Um, and I do know if Sarah, if you might just um. Look at paragraph three under item A, application twenty one oh four. In the middle, it says, Mr. Panico inquired about the modesty of the sign. And I don't understand what that's being referred to. Mr. Panico, do you remember?
Oh, I don't recall it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll go back and look at the minutes.
Right.
Okay, me too.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, yes, no, I'll I'll re-listen.
Okay, all right. So I just didn't understand what that was. But other than that, um, I didn't see anything. Does any commissioner have any? Uh, comments about the uh, June eighth minutes? Okay, all right. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the June eighth minutes?
Commissioner Parkins will make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
With the notations.
Right, with the notations, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly, I heard you for a second.
Yeah.
Okay, on the motion to approve made by Commissioner Parkins with the notations that I expressed, second by Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Yu Seo?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present.
Okay. Commissioner Mato?
Aye.
Commissioner Wodamski?
Aye.
Commissioner Parkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
It's your votes. I motion to approve the June eighth minutes. Um, pass five zero one. Okay, for June sixteenth. Just check my. So. Nope, I didn't have any comments myself. Is there anyone that has any uh, comments about the June sixteenth minutes?
No.
To our screen.
Looked good to me.
Uh, Mr. Rosetti, I don't see anybody up on the screen. Does anybody know what happened?
Um, I I'm still seeing everybody.
Okay.
Turned everybody.
I'm back. Okay, it's back. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, so motion to approve sixteen minutes as submitted uh, from Commissioner Parkins. There is a second.
A second.
Commissioner Mato, so on the motion to approve the June sixteenth minutes as submitted, Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Parkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Mato?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu Seo?
I'm also going to abstain because I was also excused for this meeting.
Okay, and Commissioner Wodamski?
I'm going to abstain. I was only there for six minutes.
Okay, the last six minutes. Yes, I remember that. That was the traffic night that you had.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about that.
Yeah. And uh, the chair votes aye. So the motion to pass the June sixteenth minutes have passed four zero two. Okay, seeing that there's no other item on the agenda, the chair declares the meeting adjourned as of seven thirty two P M. Thank you everyone and we'll see you next week.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.